And our next item is secondary number requests submitted by Heinz Acquisitions. I'll turn it over to Rich.
Thank you, sir. So this is commonly known as the Forbes property. Zero Thurman Tanner Parkway. Heinz Acquisitions LLC has requested rezoning from highway business to light industrial. Can see where the property is located on the zoning map with a star. This is an aerial and kind of shows what's out there and what's proposed. So you can see that the highway business would remain in front where the current gas station is. There's the highway business parcel is outside of TRG apartments. Zone HB across the street. And you can see it's designated where they're asking for the M1 is in roughly showing in the yellow. Again, this is just a overview of it showing where the exits are, the new exit course and the current line. So rough layout was proposed and two office warehouse buildings with the highway business remaining along Thelney Brook Boulevard. This is an elevation submitted by applicant and give me a general idea of what it would look like. This is a landscaped land submitted by the applicant showing the buffer along Thurman Tanner. And I just wanted to speak briefly to the buffer shown against the existing highway business because I was in question, is that going to be completely clear cut and replanted? Are they going to try to leave as much as they can out there? And speaking to the applicant, they're going to try to keep as much as they can out there, but it's really just going to be depend on if this is approved, the building goes in, what that slope is going to be like. So the intent is to try to keep as much out there as they can, but they didn't want to show that because they really don't know what's going to happen when they get out there. So instead of showing that natural buffer remaining, they were cautious and just said it's going to be completely replanted, but that's not their intent. They would like to keep as much out there as they can. And speaking to the applicant, they kind of think it's going to end up if approved and this goes through, it'll be a mix. They'll do some new plantings and they'll try to keep as much out there as they can. Because as you know, it's a nice tree line out there now that would kind of separate the M1 if rezoned and the existing highway business. So just to recap, we have the public hearing back in August. We had a work session, did the first vote. We had another work session and then from October 7th, we had a little break where there was some additional information put in. And now this is the second vote tonight. And that additional information was some additional traffic information that was submitted earlier this week, which unfortunately didn't make it on the agenda packet. We all have given that. And that was also sent to Clark Patterson to be reviewed and an opinion on that. And Mr. Eddie that was here if you have questions regarding the additional information about traffic that was submitted. And of course, applicant is here as well if you have any questions.
All right. So I believe the applicant wanted to present the traffic stuff. So if you'll come on up to the floor.
Good evening. Thank you again for your time and all your work and attention over the last few months on this project. We truly appreciate it. All of council and all of staff. It refers to a couple of items that Rich mentioned, we've been working on since the last work session, or really two items, the landscape plan, which we talked about, and I think Rich really hit on most of the items there. Okay, sure. I heard it echo earlier, so let me know if we get too close, but we're happy to speak up. So again, the two items we have been working on the last 30 days were landscape plan and the traffic study. So Rich covered most of the landscape plan that we've been working on regarding the buffer between highway business and M1. Also wanted to highlight, we have maintained throughout the application process about an eight acre undisturbed natural buffer between 985 and our project. That includes not disturbing any of the stream. So we've really buffered, you know, all sides of the project except for that, which was Thurman Tanner. But in addition to that, we've worked with council to add some plantings and a tree line along Thurman Tanner to dress up the entry a little bit. Wasn't shown on the rendering, but was shown on landscape plan. Questions regarding traffic and really that were kind of arisen at the last work session was not just what's the impact on Thurman Tanner, which we've been working on all along and worked through and approved. Meeting cut plan with CPL, we've had several meetings with staff and it's engineered to work through that plan. But there were some questions about what is the downline impact along Spout Springs Road. So we worked with a traffic engineer who has recent experience in the city to come up with the latest traffic counts and data. And a couple of things that I think really were important to point out, you know, in addition to just the data, the trip counts and distribution was announced on peak hours. And there were some questions about utilization time of day. I think the important thing to circle there is we only anticipate about four trucks leaving the site during peak hour, about six in the afternoon. That's inbound each way. So four in, four leaving the site in the morning, and about six coming in, six coming out in the afternoon. So I think that's really important to think about from a traffic impact standpoint, when that road is most congested from an automobile standpoint, we'd expect that to be the least impact from a truck standpoint. Again, most of those trucks are working through the night off of peak hours and get paid by the mile. There was a question about traffic impact to Spout Springs on a relative basis. That number has come down in the last few months because of the new exit. I think our engineer said there's about 2,000 less daily trips along Spout Springs Road before H14 opened up. So that was encouraging in general, but relative to our project, they would only anticipate a net increase of about 3.4% due to the auto truck traffic increase for our project. Now, another thing that we've said earlier in the implications, on a relative basis, we would expect retail to have 10 to 12 times higher traffic counts and single family 9 to 10 times higher traffic impact versus a logistics use. So I think those were the key findings out of the traffic study that was done by MP5 and reviewed by the city's engineer, CPL associates. Any specific questions on that that I didn't answer?
May our council have questions?
I know that I thought you kind of know it might be, Rich, and you might have to help out on this. I know there was a lot of talk about the median breaks and what eventually kind of was the solution on the median breaks and how did that all work out? How did that pan out?
Okay, go ahead.
So it was a really collective effort of trying to utilize existing infrastructure along Thurman Tanner, which is a bigger element of this project. It's got great infrastructure due to sanitary sewer easement. We're going to need to realign when we end that and move it just a little bit down. One of the implications of that is that we're then going to limit outbound traffic from this property across the street just to create enough sightlines and spacings. We've submitted that plan to CPL as Joe, they agreed to that. I don't want to speak for them, they can, but from our perspective, that was really the reason for why we needed to modify the median cut to make sure that we've got the right flow, right safety on our plan. And really now we have three points of ingress, egress to spread out traffic along Thurman Tanner versus just one pinch point. So that was the thought process, but it was a collaborative effort.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll just say that there's been a lot of back and forth about where could the median breaks?
Microphone.
Just a little closer. Okay. There was a lot of back and forth with the developer's engineer regarding the spacing and location of the median openings. And so I think we've come to an agreement on that at this point. When you say it's going to prevent out access, is that the property that Forbes group owns? Is that what you're speaking of?
Yes.
That's correct.
And that would be done through the median cut.
Okay. And then the detention basin, would that, is that the way it would propose for that to be in case of some type of landscaping as well? But right now it's showing that gets right up to it, so.
That's correct. So we, just the way that the topography works, we try to crush gravity from stormwater into the detention basin. And also it helps to put it in the back of the site so you don't, it's not really a landscape feature necessarily that you want prominent. So we tucked it in the back of the site and it's just the way that the topography works. So again, the exact sizing may vary a little bit in terms of depths and the slopes, but that's the area that we envision it based on the natural grade.
But there'll be plantings around that though as far as to shield the bumper side or especially?
We'll try to leave as much natural as we can around it. There won't be any plantings behind the trailer parking, but obviously along with the stream on H15, there's the natural buffer because of the DOT, that buffer is shown, but you can see to the south of the property line that'll all be a natural buffer between H15 and the detention line.
Other questions from council or?
I think we just had one other comment from another representative that he wanted to make and I think we've covered everything else. Thank you.
In speaking with the owner of the property more recently and speaking about some of the concerns that council and residents had, he asked me, what can we do to help? And about traffic. We talked about a lot of scenarios, not knowing exactly what would be best fit. He, in good faith, said that he would be willing to contribute $200,000 towards traffic improvements in that area to benefit the city of Flowering Ranch. Out of his pocket, obviously conditioned on this summing, but I wanted to make that known to you guys.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Anybody else in council have questions for the developer or Rich? And our next, all right. And with that, we'll adjourn the work session and go to the voting session. And at the beginning of the voting session, we always have a couple of comments. And for those of you who came in and just signed in, if you want to speak on a topic, you have two minutes. And we'll ask you to come up to the podium and state your name and address. Please keep it civil. And if it gets personal, then we will just, I'll stop so you cut you off and ask you to stop.
If it's personal, please.
What?
What do you mean by personal?
Make it a personal attack.
I know where you live, I know who you're friends with.
Those kind of things. Yes, sir. If you, if you start talking about who I'm friends with on Facebook or my spouse is friends with on Facebook.
You won't get there.
You're done. All right. So just ask, just come to the podium and state the name and address for the record because if not, then I get yelled at by the clerk that has to put that in the record. We do limit it to two minutes because I've got 25 people signed up here. That would be right over 50 minutes if we went by that. And then add transition time in, people coming up would be right over an hour or so. And I did hear some folks that had cell phones going off back there. Make sure those are turned off and silenced. I appreciate if you just said that earlier. We will start up here at the top.
Hello. I'm Ed LaSage, 5612 New Break Point Tribe. I'm a veteran. I'm an airborne ranger. The reason I bring that up is because I wear this hat to honor all the veterans. To a veteran in this room, please honor them. November is the time to honor veterans. With this hat, I received a lot of compliments. Thank you for your service. I reply to everybody, thank you for remembering those who are dead. Now, I'm going to tell you one thing, I'm not getting personal, but Mike Miller, thank you for your service. I know what the hell it's like being up there. It's a thankless job. I don't know if I'll be here in December, but thank you for your service. We didn't agree on a lot of things, but we were civil. Now, with regard to zoning, I'd like to just point out to all of the council members that are there and Mr. Ed Asbridge, who's going to be the mayor of Rockland. One thing that you have to remember is I don't think you people followed the comprehensive plan. Why in the heck you write it? I know why you write it because I was a councilman. You write it because you have to. It's a state law. But don't waste taxpayers' money doing something that you know you're going to change. I've lived here for 20 years and I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot of changes. I agreed with a lot of changes. You people have changed zones. And one of the most significant ones is where I live, where you changed it for the sake of the Baptist church. That zoning is sitting out there to be changed again. But the comprehensive plan, if you don't agree with it, don't put it down. Please, don't waste my taxpayers' money and the taxpayers' money of all these people that are sitting beside me. Because it's, you're kidding yourself. You're kidding yourself. What is the comprehensive plan worth? You have changed everything. Now, as far as the zoning on these two things, I don't like it. I don't like any change. And you want to know what city is the greatest city around here? And we used to compare it when I was on the council, is Oakwood. Mayor Scroggs has been there for ages. You want to know what? He lived by his comprehensive plan. So let's do the same thing in Flowering Ranch. I know I'm doing a little bit of preaching. I'm not getting upset, but if you didn't mean it, put it down in writing, the old fashioned way. Put it down and you mean it. And I don't think you people really meant what you had in the comprehensive plan. That zoning and rezoning and the dialogue that I heard this evening about whether or not you're going to keep something in or not, that is not an issue of zoning or not zoning. That's an issue of legality. That's my opinion. So please, don't waste my taxpayers' money that funds the city of Flowering Ranch.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it and good luck and thank you for your service.
Thanks.
Evening, Deborah Harprider, 4433 Martin Road. I am for the proposed changes to zoning. I've been living in this area since 1986. I've seen a lot of changes. Unfortunately, we are in the midst of a great growth period and we just have to understand that it is here, I know in Hall County and Flowering Ranch and all the cities around us. I know most people don't want that, but it is here and we have to do it in a smart way. I believe that both areas, that would be a better use rather than more houses, more apartments, more townhouses, which creates more stress on our taxpayer dollars than businesses do. And so I believe that the Thurman Tanner and the other area would be a good way to use our planning. And I think that it would bring more jobs, have less traffic, and again, less pull on our taxpayer dollars because houses and people, I know that we'll be paying a dollar of our tax money, it actually costs our other tax money like a dollar forty, where a business coming into our area only uses about 60 cents of the tax dollar that comes in. So I think it's going to be beneficial all the way around. Growth is here. We have to, you know, go with it and do the best we can with the growth. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And next is Doug Harprider.
Doug Harprider, 4433 Martin Road. I agree with my wife. Thank you.
Next is Angela White.
Hello. Angela White, 6963 Woodchill Road. I have no address this week. So I spoke with a lot of my new subdivision over Halloween and talked with them about this specific issue of the Thurman Tanner area. And every single person I spoke with said, they're doing what? That's not what we moved here for. We moved away from that. So I again, and I feel like to you as one of the new residents here in Flowering Ranch, please do not approve this. We go, we moved here for something very different than what you guys are considering. So again, I speak for the new residents. I completely disapprove with the rezoning. Thank you.
Next on the list is Dwayne Sutt.
Dwayne Sutt, 5313 Holberg Street, Flowering Ranch. I'm just here to remind the council that we have freedoms in this country to buy and purchase land to do with as we wish. We don't need people telling us by law, rules, how and what we can and can't do. These property owners have rights also to be able to sell their land to somebody that wants to develop it, whatever it is, whatever, however it wants to go. I'm just here for people in general. It's all about freedom of rights. We have those rights. Thank you.
Next is Kellum Lynch.
628 Church Street. I do want to talk a little bit about the sewer treatment plant. We've been experiencing smell of oil down there. I know that we had those issues. Virgil let me go through the plant and I did a tour of it. It just seems like there's, recently, the past couple of months, we've had a lot of it. And my concern is we are being inundated by the growth we currently are having. I'd like to see some kind of report that says, not from us, but from somebody else outside the agency or EPA, what's going on. You know, because to me, it looks like it's too much growth at this point. We can't, and I know in two years, we're going to get a new plant. We can't wait two years for that. We're going to get it fixed in March. In March, we're going to get it fixed. And is that going to clear out the smell? You guys don't live near here. You don't smell it. You guys didn't even fix that. And the more growth, more toilets into that system isn't fixing. It's making it worse.
Megan Lynch, 5628 Church Street. Y'all know I feel. I think that there is a missing link here. And I think it's the community having a voice. It's not enough for us to be able to speak to you for two minutes. It's not enough for us to be able to call and email you and not get a response a lot of the time. I don't think you would expect any less in your community where you live. We cannot use our outdoor spaces a lot of the time. A lot of the time, it stinks so bad, I don't even want to go outside my house. And sometimes I can smell it inside my house. So what you're talking about is putting more toilets in a system that is not keeping up with the current growth. All we are asking for is for you guys to realize we are suffering. And we need a town hall meeting so we can speak and ask the questions that we don't get answers to as community currently. We do not. Because we have two minutes and we can't ask questions. Why is that? Why can we not get answers to our questions? It's a simple question. I don't understand it. My heart is here in Flowering Ranch. I love it here. But we need a voice. The community needs to be able to ask those questions. That is not a personal attack on you. It is not. I am asking for us to be able to speak and get questions answered.
Next up is Glade Carroll.
I'm Carol Anne Rand. I'm speaking for both myself and my husband. We're not against development. Growth will come. But we want orderly development. We want development that makes sense. We don't want you to violate the comprehensive town plan. Please stop violating it, changing it. The warehouses at the corner of Thurman Tanner and Thelney Brook are going to put more traffic than these folks are willing to admit, although they did some study about peak traffic hours. What about the rest of the hours? Those trucks are going to put wear and tear on the roads. Who's going to pay to keep the roads up? You're going to make me pay? Me and all of these good people pay for that many trucks? We have a new exit at HF Reed. Make the trucks use that exit. Exit 12 can stand it. If you decide against the opposition you see here to pass the rezoning on this property, then please put in an ordinance that has a wheel limit or a weight limit on Thelney Brook so that they are forced to go up and use exit 14, which is equipped to handle those trucks. That's why it was put in, so that the heavy truck traffic from Thurman Tanner could use that. Don't let them block exit 12.
Sure you can. You're fine. She said she was speaking for you, but I didn't know if you wanted to do like the other guy. You said you agreed with her.
On your very first unfinished business with the rezoning, the developer, has he done an impact study on these 14 units as to how it would affect the sewer system? Has he even addressed that? Because he didn't tonight. And as some of these folks have pointed out already, the system is overloaded. And if you're going to approve this, something needs to be done. So I suggest perhaps you put a moratorium on any and all building until you get a proper sewer system that can rectify this situation.
And next is Jared O'Church.
I'm actually going to pass.
And, thank you, ma'am. Mark Weaver, Weber, Weber. I mess that up every time.
You did. I miss it when you rectify.
My name is Mark Weber. I live at 6114 Stella Light Drive. And first let me say that I don't think people coming to a city council are wishing their opinions civilly or a lot. And I really presented the comment, yes, we have freedoms, but governments are here to protect freedoms and to create plans and to do things for the general safety, health and welfare of people. And that's kind of what I'm asking you to do. I know that you give this great thought and I appreciate the fact that you postponed the vote for some additional looking at the landscaping plan that they have and the buffers that you believe will be needed. But I think it goes beyond that. The woman that spoke about the traffic and the burden of trucks. The woman that spoke about the traffic and the burden of trucks, and yes, there'll be fewer trucks and cars that go to retail, but those 18-wheel trucks, they're a much bigger burden on our roads. And the studies already indicated that not very interested in giving us enough more money for roads. And you know, I have to just kind of relate something to you. Years ago, I was negotiating with a very big business who owned a big building for an office space. And they were telling me all the things that they promised and that they would do, none of which, of course, was in the weeds. But they promised all these things and the man sitting across from me said, "Well, don't you trust me?" And I said to him, I said, "Hey, you know, we've had a very good negotiation and a very good conversation here. Yeah, I trust you, but you may not own this building." The people that are developing these warehouses are not going to own them tomorrow. And even if they do own them tomorrow, or they own them next week, or next year, or two years from now, when the endland board starts gearing up, they're going to put in whoever they need to put in to pay the rent. They're not building these big buildings for their health. They're building them to create rent, create income, and create profit. When you look down McEver Road, we've got almost a million square feet down the Frederick Road. We go over by the Falcons complex, we've got a huge amount of warehouses being built. More warehouses in every nook and cranny and a sign up on every piece of land. And they're not leasing. They're building them speculatively. And guys and women, I really appreciate all the hard work you do, but let's look into the future. We don't know. We can't predict what they give us in traffic planning. They're projections. We don't know that that's how it's going to happen. So even if you can't bring yourself to deny this, I think that you need to take the time and look at more restrictions on, forget for a moment, visibility, just the traffic that it's going to cause and the burden it is on our roads and who's going to pay for that? The people are going to pay for that. This group of people in here and all the people in Flowerie Branch. Sir, you talked about taxes and not wanting to raise taxes. How are you going to pay for it if you don't raise taxes? We want services. We understand, and I understand, we have to be taxed. And I'm fine with being taxed to get services. But what are we going to do when all those roads, if those 18-wheelers weigh who knows what? Even if they're coming at night, they're going to be a huge burden. So I ask that, first I ask that you deny it. And then if you can't bring yourselves to deny the rezoning for whatever reason you have, take more time to look at this traffic issue. Thank you.
Next up is Tammy Duckworth.
Hello, I'm Tammy Duckworth, Doyle 5422 Long Branch Way. For a point of reference, that's just off of East Main, basically underneath the water tower, very close to Phil-Negro and Thurmond Tanner. Rightly, this council has pointed us back to the comprehensive plan repeatedly during the process of discussing these rezoning issues. And that comprehensive plan was passed or adopted on June 17th of this year. In that plan, on page 22, it states that exit 12 off of 985 and Surrounding Road, the Georgia DOT no longer thinks it's necessary based on the plan to make the improvements that were considered. Because on page 27, the map shows that area as an activity center, which is very different and separate from industrial employment. On page 36, the plan describes the definition of activity center, which does not include like industrial. To rezone, you should have to have zoning the same. If you need a compelling reason to keep the zoning the same, I would say that the comprehensive plan that you passed a few weeks prior to this request for rezoning is a very compelling reason to keep it the same. On a separate note, off of East Main, we too smell the sewer. So just what Megamarch and everybody else said about that. Thank you.
Next is Maureen Smith. All right. Alan Wayne.
Good evening. Can you hear me? My name is Alan Wayne and I reside at 5763 Wayne Crest Drive, Flowerie Branch. I have lived in the Flowerie Branch area for the best part of 78 years and I would venture to say I've probably been here longer than anybody else in this room. And I've seen a lot of changes in those 78 years. I was present when Thurmond Tanner Parkway was conceived. And it was conceived as an industrial parkway. And the primary purpose at that time was because the south end of Hall County was almost totally absent of business. And its design was to try to encourage jobs at home instead of us having to drive to Atlanta or some other place to make a living. And of course, it's a public highway. But in South Hall, we didn't have any way to bring business to us. And the city of Gainesville, and you know, I have a lot of friends in Gainesville as well, they were, it was like a blotter. They were drawing all the business up there and also with it, the tax base. I've been privy to have been a member of a number of committees in this county and one of which was the comprehensive plan committee that designed the comprehensive plan that we are following much of today. And one of the things you find, and it's brought to me by professionals, is that if you don't have a good balance between residential and business, you'll have a very, let's see, I won't call it sick, but you'll have a community that is not very friendly tax-wise to live in because I think you find nationwide, you can verify my numbers study-wise, that residential pays about 60 to 70% of what it uses in services. And business uses 60% of what it pays in taxes. And so without a good balance of business versus residential, it's going to be difficult, your tax bill is going to be difficult when you open it up. The other thing I want to point out to you is that I am close friends with the owner of this property and have been for some time. And I could speak for years on the things I know about the growth of South Hall County. But this property owner is very altruistic property owner. And I can tell you that he has been adamant for the last 15 years that this property be developed as high-end retail, as well as my dear wife. She, for years, wanted me to try to bring Avalon 2 up here and wouldn't that all be nice? I'd love that. And if you can get it to come, we'll happy to sell to them. But the fact of the matter is.
Mr. Dwayne, can you wrap it up? Red top.
With the Amazon effect, retail, brick and mortar retail is non-existent. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Next is Ray Stunivich.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Ray Stunivich, 627 Church Street. Suzanne and I moved here two years ago. We're entrepreneurs. We own eight restaurants in the Atlanta market. And we guess, we like going out on business because you can be the boss. You know, a lot of times people think, hey, you're the boss. There is no other boss. It's a beautiful thing. It doesn't quite go like that. Just like to mention that, you know, for us, our boss is our customer. I truly try to listen to my customers whenever they have a complaint or something comes up. And I hope that you all would take the same approach with us, please. We live downtown. It's a little bit different living downtown than living in a subdivision. We're not protected by cars zipping up and down Church Street. I've got to watch my grandfathers when they're playing out there in the driveway, that they won't go out to the street, that they won't get hit. You know, the recent sewer thing is just another thing, just piled up. If you want to know what it feels like, come sit on my porch with me. You'll understand that a lot better than just sitting up here, what it feels like. If you want to know what the traffic impact is, look to the left from my house and you'll see the cars backed up on Church Street waiting to turn left on the Gaines Lights Ferry. It's, you know, whether it's an afternoon thing and definitely the weekends, it's impossible. So I'm just trying to say that all these rezonings are not a slam dunk. This is not something that I can see you guys voting five to nothing for. It's, there's got to be some sort of compromise. We're not against growth. We're not even against the townhomes being there on Church Street. But something reasonable, the developer can only build six townhomes on that land. I'm even willing to say, okay, you can have more than six. Did I say 16 years back ago? Sorry. But anyway, so I'm just trying to get some kind of a compromise worked out, please. We want to stay in Flowerie Branch. You know, I've already talked to my neighbors about selling my house, for God's sake. Please don't make me do that. Let's work out some kind of a deal. Thank you for listening.
And next, it looks like is Rob Morgan. I believe Kathy Morgan's on the same line. Did you want to?
She's going to give me her time. We'll all do it in two minutes, really. My name is Rob Morgan. And for the record, I reside at 5731 Newberry Point Drive. I'm a recent resident of the Flowerie Branch area, having moved here from Swanee. And I just want to go on record and say, what we saw in Swanee, we were there 24 years, prompted the move. It was, it was a great percentage that prompted the move to Flowerie Branch because we saw what I would describe as gridlock in a community that was once voted the safest in the United States. With that being said, I want to go on record as opposing the rezoning of the trucking service and only because I know in that particular part of Flowerie Branch, it's going to cause a great deal of gridlock, delays, not to mention the wear and tear on the roads. We live in a very secluded part and I will tell you that the recent politically correct Jim Crow road has suffered greatly and it's just residential traffic. So with that being said, I just want to go on record as opposing the rezoning. Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Carol Danifer.
I'm going to pass, but compared with Mark Weber.
Okay. And on that same line, is Bill, is Bill passing? Are you speaking for Bill also?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I've heard that before. Let's see. Ryan Hoos.
Ryan Hoos, 5404 Mountain Mid Road, Flowerie Branch. First off, I'm glad we could talk tonight without being reminded of when the break game begins. I know for a fact that, I know for a fact the council would not stand for a warehouse that was built right down the road from them. Living in the villages of East Main, right across the street from where this proposed development is, it is going to be a nightmare from a traffic standpoint. That stoplight is already packed up constantly to try to turn left to go to my kid's daycare. I know they're talking about how there's more or less vehicles by this as opposed to having a mixed-use space. I just cannot disagree anymore with that. The other problem that we have consistently right now is the sewage problem. It smells terrible anywhere this side of the interstate. It just smells at different times of the day. And if you have a plan, stick by it. That's all we ask of. You know, I'm not against development. I'm not against even making some changes here and there. But if there's going to be a comprehensive, long-term plan, please stick by it because this town needs more resources, whether it's grocery stores, whether it's dining. We do not have enough right now. Our lone grocery store this side of town is overrun. That Publix does not have enough capacity at this point. We know what happens in these situations. Most of the times, the developers promise the world. And what happens when they leave is that the taxpayers face the burden of that. It's not them, it's not corporations, it's us, the taxpayers. Just a reminder, the last thing I'll say, you serve us as a community. You don't serve the developers. There's going to be people that'll come and purchase this land, even if it's not happening yet. This town is growing and it deserves a chance to keep this beautiful downtown what it is. We all we ask is for answers at the town hall. We do not care if you move forward, but we just want to have answers. Thank you and have a good night.
Next is David Wu.
I'm David Wu, I live at 5465 Trillium Way in the villages of East Main. I'm a real estate agent and we all know, location, 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 that's what improves property values. We're all landowners, homeowners tonight here. We all want to see our homes being worth more each year, drastically more, right? I'm guilty of that. I'm greedy. I like more money. When you look at a map, this is exactly how I moved here. When you look at a map of Atlanta, the first thing you see is the lake. It's the first thing you see. Wow. What is this little town, Flowerie Branch? It's right next to the lake. Three minutes. Wow, there's an interstate highway running right through Flowerie Branch. Where do you get this? You don't get it anywhere else in Atlanta. You get it in Coming. But on the east, on the west side of Lake Gleniere, you don't get to see the sunset. Only Flowerie Branch. This is a special town. When we looked at it, it's got the charm of a small town. Spouse Springs Road, we knew that it was widening in 2018. We wanted to move here then. It's a beautiful place. 12 years, Mike Miller, 12 years of being mayor, that's something else. I can't imagine how thankless a job this is, you getting sued, you know, every month maybe, right? We don't know how hard it is. It's a thankless job, really it is. Joe, you're his right-hand man for 11 years. What people are saying when we look at this, we have this special place next to the lake, next to the highway. You've served us for 12 years, 10 years of your life. 11 years of your life, Joe. What people are saying is this is fishy, something, there's corruption. That's what people are saying on Facebook privately because it's weird. You've done such a great job for more than a decade and now we're going to put a warehouse right on the right on the character area, you guys call it a char, a special character area, you guys, you guys call it the gateway of Flowery Branch. It's strange that you approved the comprehensive plan on June 17th, and then literally within a month, literally within a month, they asked to rezone that to warehouses. And you guys approved it unanimously at the September meeting, that's strange. That's why people say something's fishy here. This is how we feel. Don't let this be your legacy. We, what, we were talking with the neighbors and, you know, we want to rename a street after you. Who else has served 12 years? We, we want to put a plaque of you, you know, you've done, you really have done a great job, I'm honest with you. You know, when we moved here, we looked at this place, this is a beautiful city. You know, the last 10 years, I, I would think a lot of the credit goes to you, and Joe. Don't mess it up, and don't, don't let these things on Google say online and say, hey, this is the council that voted to put a warehouse here against their own comprehensive plan. We have a website up, it's registered for five years, we're renewing for 10 years, and it has all your names on there, so on Google, people are going to know exactly who voted for this warehouse, on Google, on YouTube. We want to hold you accountable. We're taxpayers, and this is the least we can ask for. Thank you.
I'm going to pass.
Pass. And Morgan Brick.
So as a resident and developer, I guess now in Flowery Branch, I just want to say I'm very proud of the job that's been done here over a long period of time, and even put some difficult decisions. And look, not everybody's going to agree with every decision you make. There's going to be a minority out there that says, hey, we don't want it this way, we don't want that color, we don't want that look. But I'm really proud of the job that's been done because of the collaboration and because of the communication, not only with developers, I've been speaking for myself, but with the community and the outreach that I've had from other community members, residents, neighbors, downtown Flowery Branch residents, that are very supportive of this project. Yes, it has been vetted extremely well, and thank you, that Rich and your team and Ron, thank you for going through all the vetting to make sure it's in, it's in the notes. All the findings are right here, for anybody that wants to see the findings and the impact studies, they're right here. And I'm very proud of the job that's been done, so thank you.
Jack Leathers.
My name is Jack Leathers, I reside at 7059 Valley Forge Drive. And my mother, one time owned grandmother's flower garden, which is now a condo unit. I'm not against growth, but I think we need to do it in a logical way. And certainly, the traffic flow that we have on Spout Springs has been a concern. I moved here, myself and my wife and daughters, moved here because of Flowery Branch and being a small town atmosphere. And again, I'm not against growth, but I just think we need to do it in a very logical fashion. Appreciate most of your services, everyone, thank you.
Next is Suzanne Cartwright.
Suzanne Cartwright, 5627 Church Street. He hit it on the, a nail on the head, guys. I mean, I, I was going to say fishy, but to give away a street so somebody can put 14 townhomes instead of the way it is designated on your comprehensive plan, he could put six really nice homes on there, and men could kill him. And they would be beautiful and add to that downtown area. He probably could keep a couple of those trees as our Flowery Branch Tree City designation. But to give away a city street so he could put 14 and change the rezoning is fishy. It's fishy. And if Mr. Brick would like to be a community member, then he should just give you the parcel that you need for your farmer's market, which this, in my opinion, is really all about. Because if he just gave you that piece, then you could have your farmer's market, which is what you guys want. He could have his six really nice townhomes, and everybody would be happy. That's how I look at it, and I think that's a lot, how a lot of us look at it. You know, growth is great, but we've got to look at what everybody moved to Flowery Branch for. And your plan was what people moved here for, and what people want. And you can't just go up and change it because you feel like it or you're getting something for it. But that's how we feel. Everybody who has and owns a property, they can do whatever they want on it. I agree with that gentleman, except for what it's zoned for. And his property was not zoned for 14 townhomes. You're changing the game, and it's fishy.
Next is Jack Rafferty.
I appreciate it all, I appreciate you so much, you're the stretch. I'm Jack Rafferty, I'm from 5413 Falling Branch Quarter. And we want retail business here. We want retail traffic for much-needed retail goods and services, not more trucks. We heard originally that there'd be up to 900 a day, and that's 37.5 trucks per hour, not before than we just heard earlier this evening. Something's missing in between. Now, we had, I looked at the comprehensive plan, David Wu pointed out beautifully, you know, what our problem is there. Within a two-month period, you entirely flip from consummation activity area to industrial, voting unanimously for trucks. Look, we can give our two-minute presentations, but we can't get any answers from you. You've ignored our request for a town hall meeting, which would have allowed that, and have failed to provide a, an objective traffic impact analysis or feasibility study to show that the rezoning is anything but the disaster we anticipated. Now, prior to the election, we met with William McDaniel, believes in open government.
Possible impact on our growing city. Thank you for your time and your consideration, as well as your service to our community. Mark J. Miller.
Thanks, sir. And that's the last person on the list. So if anybody did sign up, and this gentleman raised his hand first, so I'll go by that. You do have to say your name. Anna Patrick.
My name is Dean Ryan, I live at 7899 Russell Lancer Drive, and Sterling on the Lake. So those that live over in this area, I live at Sterling on the Lake, we rent a slip over here, a hideaway bed, and I sympathize with the odor that you guys have to deal with. All right, we drive through there, and I can't believe that you guys have to live in that. I'm on board with you, we're trying to get that fixed, okay? Believe me. Just because we live over there doesn't mean we feel differently than you guys. With all due respect, the bill or representative said that there's only going to be 10 trucks a day during the work hours. What guarantee is there of that? What guarantee? I mean, it's just words right now. And this is my third meeting that I've been to, it's promised to be, to be much more. But I've been looking for a traffic study on this whole development on that corner, and I haven't seen one. It was presented tonight, but one was issued today. I think that this public deserves the time to review that traffic study, see if it was credentialed with the right people, if it was done by a professional, if it was done a third party. I voted here Tuesday night, on my way home, there's Sterling on the Lake. I got over the railroad tracks, and tractor trailer was turning off at Thurman Tanner, and it barely made that left turn, and as it generally went through the, under the pass to go north on 985, I thought to myself, there's no way that this location can handle 20, 30, 40, 100, 200, 300, 400, as they said, tractor trailers, there's just no way it can happen. I'm against this rezoning, you could probably tell. And I'm asking that you guys please deny it for tonight, deny this rezoning. And I'm also, I assume that you guys operate under Robert's rules of order, and if you do not rezonate, I ask you to table this vote tonight, so we can review this traffic study that just got presented today. I think that's fair to ask, and I appreciate you guys' service to our community. I know it's got to be a thankless job, I don't want to be upon that panel right now, and I sympathize with you guys too. It's a hard decision you guys have to make every, every two weeks, okay? Thank you.
All right, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I didn't get a nail on the list, I was protecting your family back there. I'm Paige Adams, I live at 5316 Row Road Avenue, and I'm here to support the townhouses on Church Street. The street that they're wanting to come in, that's my street, that's my driveway. The farmer's market that everybody loves to go to, that is going to benefit them being right there. The townhouses are going to bring new, younger people to Flowery Branch. We need change, we need growth, and in order to do that, you are being presented with townhouses that are amazing, that will benefit and will look like we want Flowery Branch to look. We don't need to stay where we've always been, it's time for some change.
Yes, ma'am.
Chanel Jones, I live at 5572 Garen's Way, I've lived in Flowery Branch for several years now. I'm speaking in regards to the rezoning of Thurman Tanner and Spout Springs, I'm not in favor of this rezoning. When I spoke a couple of months ago, I started with actions speak louder than words. I'll remind you of that again tonight. Four months ago, you signed the comprehensive plan for this town. You promised to build an activity center and a care to area. Warehouses do not fall under that category. We had a petition signed of 206 members, citizens of this town who could not be here tonight to say that they are not in favor of this either. There, we have another, probably 50, 60 people sitting here in the room. The citizens have spoken, it's time for you to listen. The most important thing an individual has is his or her word. What else do you have if you don't have your word? We are asking you, we expect it of you. Live up to your word, do not allow the rezoning of that land, follow the comprehensive plan that you put forth. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, come on down.
Rachel Gates, 5643 Parkview Lane. I am against the rezoning of Thurman Tanner Parkway. This project is wrong for our community and is the wrong type of growth. Also, these off-peak hours that the trucks are supposed to be coming through, they're when my neighbors and I are going to be trying to sleep and relax, and it's going to affect our sleep, our health, and overall well-being. Also, I can't guarantee the amount of trucks that are coming and going day-to-day. The, while the study might supposedly show more trucks or more cars, if there's going to be retail stores, but the trucks for the warehouses are going to take up more space, they're going to damage our roads, they're going to be louder, and more harmful to the environment. And what about the employees who are going to work there? Are their vehicles included in the study? Because there'll be some of those in there too. If these warehouses are built, there should be a natural buffer between the warehouses and Thurman Tanner, so we don't have to look at every day. And also, the trucks are going to use exit 14, because exit 12 cannot handle the increased traffic. And also, the crew that has been reviewing our roads have been leaving trash up and down the road. I found one shift leftover, I even found a liquor bottle on the side of the road, which I didn't see before they were redoing the road. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Judith McCall, 5731 Mitchell Street. When we had the last few meetings, when they did, you approved the townhomes on McCaper, and you held them to HOA agreement to no more than 10% rental. Is that, is that not right? On the plan for Mr. Brick's property, it's changed to 20%. I, I'm just really concerned about the growth in rental property when it's residential owner property was the goal. And that's very concerning. Thank you.
Now, you passed earlier.
I know, I just can't.
Then don't tell us that we aren't allowed to change our mind, because you just changed your mind.
I'm not female, I changed my mind. I was not going to say anything, and I had a litany of things to say. But, um, we just went to Indianapolis, we went to the 500 in 2006. It was such a cute, quaint town when we drove into it. We went back this year because my son raced to the Speedway, it didn't go well, but anyway. They had built warehouses all the way into Indianapolis. It changed the whole complexion of that town. I've had a business in Flowery Branch since 19 something or other, 26 years, and we've owned property since 83. I respect the people for doing the development, I don't think it's going to be good for the town. I would love to see a grocery store. We desperately need a grocery store on this side of town. This is really kind of off the ball, but I went to East Berlin after the wall came down, and I saw people waiting in line at the grocery stores, and I foresee that in Flowery Branch, if we don't get some kind of retail and grocery stores on this side of town, I'm sorry about the warehouse idea, it's not a good idea.
I'll do, thank you.
You're fine.
Okay, so just a few things that I thought about. I missed the last meeting, but I was at the 104, oh, sorry, Jennifer Stan, 5631 Parkview Lane. A few things that I know we need to discuss, the trucks, I think at the very first meeting, the number was 900, and then in the last meeting I was at, which I think was two meetings ago, the number was 600. That's 600 tractor trailers a day, that's 25 an hour. And I think, my question is, how is that considered light industrial? 25 semi-trucks an hour is pretty heavy industrial, in my opinion, whether they're all coming in in a two-hour period, or they're coming in, you know, every, one an hour. To me, that just seems not light industrial, and I don't know that we have any bearing on who moves into those warehouses once they're built. I know we don't know who's going to go there, so those are all just projections, but something to consider. Also, the other thing I had thought about with that many trucks is we don't have the gas stations or the accessibility for those trucks to fill up. Where are they going to get gas? Where are they going to get snacks? Where are they going to take restroom breaks? None of our little gas stations right here on Spout Springs can support that, and to my knowledge, I don't think there's anything up at exit 14. So I think it's sort of one of those... So I think it's sort of one of those, like, if you give them a cookie, we allow them to build their warehouse, and the next thing you know, we're gonna have two truck stops up at exit 14, so these trucks can fill up and sleep and shower, because 25 trucks a day is a lot of trucks. So just something to consider for sure.
Anybody else? All right. Go on once. Or go on twice. All right.
Sure you can. First of all, about town hall meetings. And this man here has been mayor of the town for, like, 12, well, 11 years, been on the council for 12. And I've been to other council meetings and watched how they work. And this guy right here runs a meeting like a town hall meeting. I know that everybody might have one Q and A and that kind of thing. But that's very difficult to do in an environment like this, where you may not have the answers. As a council, we're not at this city hall every day. And to ask the staff to come up with an answer to a very specific question on when is also very difficult for them to do. Sometimes that's there, sometimes the answer's not there. I often refer to Mike, myself, I refer him to Andy Griffith, the mayor's. He lets people get up here and talk. And when he has to get tough, he gets tough. And the idea that we haven't had discussions and deliberations and communication about any of these issues, when we intentionally created lots and lots of meetings to address any kind of rezoning that comes down the pike. I was at a council meeting recently where it was literally the planning commission and a vote on the planning commission the same day. And the people pretty much got cut off. I mean, literally, after a certain amount of time, it cut them off. And lots and lots of people still have something to say. Mayor Miller just sat here, took everybody that was on the list, and said, who else wants to speak? I'm telling you, that doesn't happen in many places. That just does not happen. That same city, after the planning commission hearing, held a council hearing for the final vote on the matter. Again, people were cut off. Lines of people were ready to talk. They were cut off. Didn't get their two minutes to talk. And they made a decision right there on the spot. And people didn't even know who made the motion on the particular matter at hand. They couldn't even hear it. So I'm very thankful that we've had a mayor like Mike Miller right here that has held these meetings the way he's held. Because I know if I'm sitting out there and I'm a citizen, sometimes when you can say, by gosh, I got to say what I needed to say. I said what I needed to say. And I got that opportunity. There's some comfortability in that. I'm not saying that, you know, you can say, I persuaded them one way or the other. But at least you got the opportunity to get up here and speak. And I've seen it where that has not happened in other municipalities. They run a tight ship and they say, hey, 30 minutes, 30 minutes, we're done. And then they go to the voting. The other thing I wanted to say was, absolutely, the smell of the sewer is not acceptable. But I will tell you this, the staff is not sitting on their hands thinking, we can't do anything about it. They are throwing everything they can that they know of right now to remedy that situation. And it's gonna be fixed. It is gonna be fixed. And people say, well, you guys don't smell it because y'all live a few miles down the road. We do smell it. We ride through here. And I know we're not necessarily living in close proximity to this, but we aren't representatives of the city, and that does reflect on us. So please don't think for a second that we're not asking for updates. What's going on? How are we gonna get this thing fixed? And we have been assured that it is going to be fixed. I will tell you that if it was an issue that was a public health issue, EPA would have come in and they would have flat-out put the hammer on us. So I promise, that sewer issue is being worked on. I know that that doesn't help people when you smell it, when you go outside and you smell it. But that is being worked on actively.
But it would be helpful if we had communication about it.
All right. So we are at our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda is Resolution 21-019, an amendment to the budget. And at this point, I would need a motion on that item. I do have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second and a third. We're going with jerk vote, guys. And we'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And then we have Resolution 21-018. And Mr. Bennett, can you read those captions for that?
Yes, sir. I'm glad to do that. It's Resolution Number 21-018. It is a resolution that establishes the use rates for water and sewer service within the city, the connection fees, and without the city, the connection fees for water service and the connection capacity fees for sewer service. And those rates are set as shown in the ordinance for part three resolution.
Thank you, sir. Anyone want to link that motion to?
I think we should consider Resolution 21-018, where we're wanting to get the water sewer bridge.
Have a motion, go on, a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion from council?
Other than, we're still looking into the service delivery charge, correct? That's still gonna be looked at over a couple of months to see if that needs to be adjusted. Is that correct?
Yeah, there'll be a new study performed and...
We will come up with recommendations closer to fall next year.
Okay. And that would be conservative to its own developers. That's correct. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else from council? Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And then we have the first reading of rezoning request submitted by the town hall. And Mr. Bennett, do you need to read anything for that?
I do, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 641. It's an ordinance that will amend the zoning map of the city of Flowery Branch, Georgia, by rezoning a point two plus minus acre parcel of real property zoned by South Hall LLC. It has a common address of 5611 Church Street and tax parcel ID number of 8112A 2007. This particular parcel is shown on exhibit A and is described on exhibit B. The rezoning would be from traditional neighborhood development district to central business district, and it will be subject to the conditions that are set forth on exhibit C. The ordinance provides per sevability. It appeals to conflicting ordinances. It provides for an effective date. It is for all other lawful purposes.
Thank you, sir. Anyone want to make a motion on ordinance 641? Motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 641.
Have a motion to approve. I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Again, this has been a rezoning that's been around for quite some time. It came to us, and then it was withdrawn, and then it's back to us now. This is 14 units on 1.1, almost 1.1 acres. There is an exchange of property, not a giving away of property. The city is not giving away property without having property returned to it. The South Hall LLC is going to exchange a portion of the backside of two of these parcels for what right now is a road that cuts kind of between these parcels of property. So that's something that has been on there. And yes, we're trying to gather that piece of property to continue a park that we would like to have built, that is gonna be a really, really nice venue for the city of Flowery Branch. One thing that we've heard from many citizens. And when we did some surveys and such recently, is that they would like a park. This allows for us to build the type of park that we have envisioned on that piece of property. It's gonna be, we say it's a farmer's market, but it's gonna have multiplicity of uses. It's not just gonna be a farmer's market. We see here that the place is crowded whenever we do have a farmer's market. It's just gonna be moved down that way again if this is to pass. The other issue here is obviously what they have, in my opinion, put out there as far as renderings. These are beautiful townhomes. I mean, we're talking six-foot-deep decks and porches on the front of some of these. There's seven balconies on the back of these 14 units that will kind of overlook the park. Again, usable porches, usable balconies, detached garages on seven of the 14 units. Sidewalks, which people have said we need more of. This would allow for a full, ornate field of sidewalk down Church Street. Rear entry. Again, you know, it's nice to be able to ride past buildings and not see garage doors. They've agreed to put carriage doors on the back of them, not aluminum doors. I mean, they, architectural sheens. The way the market is right now, if they were to get this thing built soon, this is over $400,000 townhome that they're gonna be able to market this thing for. I know that the ones here, that Mr. Hill's building right now, he's aiming for that. To me, that's not gonna bring down property values in the general vicinity of this area. Also knowing, this is a downtown area. You're right, this is not a 2001 planned unit development. It's not. This is a downtown area. And with that, you have to have some density to be able to support the businesses that are down here. We have heard for 10 years that people don't come down to the city of Flowery Branch for shopping because there's no easy way to get down there. So a roundabout was built, which is paid for, 100% paid for. That was built to help to access the downtown, also alleviate some of the traffic there on Life's Ferry and make it easier to move around in that area. The other thing that we've heard from merchants that are down here is, you know, Atavellum does a pretty good job at seeing people come back. They come back from different areas. You know, they come back from Sawani. They come back from Gainesville. Because they have a brand of food that is unique and an atmosphere and that kind of stuff. But some of these other shops that are here now, they're going to be here. Basically, we got four parcels there on Main Street right now that we're hoping to have rented. When you think about those, those merchants are going to be frequented by people that live in this general vicinity. If there are restaurants, such as Peyton's Pie, you know, a guy that lives in a townhome or apartment here on Main Street, he might go to Peyton's Pie once a week. But a guy that lives in Marshallville, he might show up once every three months to get a Peyton's Pie. A guy that lives in Sawani, he might show up once every three months to get a Peyton's Pie. So in every downtown area that you see, you see high-density development. And I've heard people say, you know, and not everybody wants this, but I've heard people say, look at Sawani. Look at Duluth. Look at Beaufort. They're building townhomes and how they, I mean, how they, I don't know. Anyhow, I was gonna say, I don't think I'd be in front. Can I say, well, yes, I'm gonna say? But they're building them right and left out there. And when I say they're building them, volume, volume, not necessarily density. Not necessarily density, but they're building volume and volume and volume. Meaning they're building hundreds of townhomes in their downtown. This is 14 units. And please also remember this. There's three properties sitting there right now. So this is a net difference of 11 properties. And the three properties that are there right now, quite frankly, South Hall LLC has assembled property, quite frankly, right out of a monopoly playbook. They have assembled an entire block. And, you know, you can't fault them for doing that. That's strategy on their part. That's forward-thinking. And now they've got this opportunity to change that piece of property into something that... I don't wanna speak poorly of anybody, but I will tell you this. These townhomes are gonna look a whole lot better than the three pieces of property that are sitting there. And South Hall LLC can sit there and use those as a cash cow and rent those out for the next whoever knows how many years. I mean, and then you've got those particular buildings sitting right behind a park that the city is looking to spend a substantial amount of money on. So just to kind of go back where we started, this has been a long process. And I just, you know, to think that we have not put a whole lot of effort into this is to think the wrong way. There's been a lot of effort put into this. There's been a lot of changes and different additions, one after the other. And for that reason, tonight, I'm voting to approve this for those reasons.
Thank you, sir. Anyone?
Yeah, I wanna add. I got a lot of what Councilman England said. I think the applicant has worked diligently with city staff and council, taken feedback, been receptive of feedback. It reminds, the feedback that we have given the applicant is a direct result of what we have heard from y'all at council meetings. Y'all talked about, you know, wanting to be heard and compromised. I feel like that's where we are. I feel like we have gotten there. The only thing I feel like y'all aren't getting that some of y'all want is the density. I feel like we have addressed so many of the desires that y'all did want. So I don't know really where else to go from there. The density of the project is not dissimilar to the density of other projects in the area. If we want there to be the vibrant downtown that I believe y'all desire, that is the vision of the city, and want to spend the money on Main Street to have those new buildings and hopefully get them leased soon, and have things in there that people want to come to, there have got to be things that draw, there have got to be people here to go to those things, as Councilman England said. And those 14 townhomes are going to be, are a part of that. The townhomes up here are gonna be a part of that. All of that is gonna feed the vibrancy of the downtown area that we have all envisioned. So for that reason, I support it as well.
Anything else?
No, I just echo a lot of what Councilman Barrett and Councilman England said. I mean, we've listened, we've met separately outside of council meetings with folks to go over these issues. We've taken feedback back to our staff, back to the architects. We've paid for architects to come in and review these things to get the best possible product in that area. So to spare us a point, everything, there's sidewalks, there's curb and gutter, there's porches, there's the look and feel of T and D and the CBD area.
Parcel with an address of 5615 Church Street and tax parcel ID number of 812A 2008. It is shown on exhibit A, is described on exhibit B, and it's conditioned as shown on exhibit C. The ordinance provides for separability. It appeals to conflicting ordinances. It provides for an effective date. It is for all other lawful purposes.
Thank you, sir. And anyone want to make a motion on ordinance 642?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 642.
Have a motion, go on, a second.
Second.
All right. And? Anyone else?
I wanted to add something. I heard somebody say about the rental and the percentage. The percentage on the townhomes that were mentioned out on McKever was 10%, but there were hundreds of those townhomes. This percentage is a bit higher, but there's only 14 townhomes. So again, when you do the math, there is a much greater chance that the townhomes on McKever will have more rentals than the ones that are on Church Street.
All right. Anybody else have anything else? All right. We'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right. Mr. Bennett, what's the third ordinance number there?
It is 643. And this ordinance would amend the zoning map of the city of Flowery Branch, Georgia, by rezoning a parcel of real property that's owned by South Hall LLC from... Georgia by rezoning a partial real property that's owned by South Hall LLC from traditional neighborhood development district to central business district. This property is .67 plus or minus acres and has a street address of 5621 Church Street and a tax parcel ID number of 812A 2009. This particular property is shown on Exhibit A and described on Exhibit B, and it will be conditioned as shown on Exhibit C. The ordinance provides for separability. It repeals conflicting ordinances, provides for an effective date, and is for all other lawful purposes.
Thank you, sir. Anyone wanna make a motion on ordinance 643?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 643.
Have a motion go out in a second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Here, none. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that's all for that one, Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir, that was the last ordinance.
All right. And then, so our next one is the Heinz.
That ordinance number 652.
652, and is it one ordinance for that one?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Ordinance 652 would be an ordinance that amends the zoning map of the city of Flowery Branch, Georgia by rezoning a 37.8 plus or minus acre portion of a larger 84.79 plus or minus acre tract of land that's owned by Atlanta One Limited Partnership. It hasn't been assigned a number, so it's known as Zero Thurman Tanner Parkway. It has a tax parcel ID number of 8097-8. It is shown as Track Two on Exhibit A and is legally described on Exhibit B. The rezoning would be from Highway Business to M1 Line Industrial. It will be subject to the conditions that are set forth in Exhibit C attached to the ordinance. The ordinance provides for separability. It repeals conflicting ordinances, provides for an effective date, and is for all other lawful purposes.
Thank you, sir. Anyone wanna make that motion?
Let's take a discussion, and I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 652.
Have a motion go out in a second. Second. Motion in a second. And we're going to assume, we're going to...
Yes, the current owner of the property has said that they would be willing to contribute $200,000 to road improvements around this project. And, Mr. Bennett, if the motion is made, how would we put that condition in there? And will we, we need to, I guess, collect those funds?
The condition would be just more to motivate the contribution. It would be in the nature of a development agreement. You know, we could set the terms as to when the money would be paid, how it might be held. So, at the very least, you would need a condition that would say that there be a development agreement with a contribution of $200,000 toward traffic improvements in the area of the parcel.
He just made a motion.
So, he said a development agreement of $200,000, right, contribution?
Not, I did have more, though. Give me a second. Copy his notes. Okay. I will tell you this, Thurman Tanner Parkway was built quite some time ago and before many of us lived down here. Certainly before a lot of development, which runs quite contrary to how things usually go. Usually you get the rooftops and you get the businesses and all of a sudden you gotta start putting in the roads and the infrastructure to support those things because you just, you don't have the tax base to service the debt that building those roads costs. So, Thurman Tanner was built on pretty much speculation that eventually it would be used for a industrial-type park, which Sawani has, which Duluth has, which Beaufort has, anywhere and everywhere. That they have millions, all three of those cities have millions and millions and millions of distribution space. And I would venture to say, other than Brazos, there's probably not any of them that are as close to a main artery as Thurman Tanner is to 985 or any of their properties in those other cities that I just mentioned are to 85. This type of zoning, it does indeed create a tax increment that is greater than what it gobbles up, without question. I know people say, well, the trucks are gonna tear the roads up, and yes, and cars do the same thing, and trucks will as well, and we have to plan for that. We have funds that are available from SWAST that we intend to use to try in some way to improve the traffic flow there on Spouse Springs. That does have to be looked at to see how that is exactly going to happen. That takes time to do, obviously. We deny the school system in Flowery Branch, however, these types of developments are huge for the school system. Hawk County School System is where most of the kids that live in the city of Flowery Branch go to. And these types of developments are huge for the school system. Why? Because there's not one pupil that lives under the roof, and they, this particular development's a $25 million development. This is also in the TAB district, and that's called a tax allocation district. Not every piece of land in the city of Flowery Branch is in the TAB district. To give you an idea, Stonebridge Village is, the apartments, the crest at Flowery Branch is, this is in the TAB district. What that means is, the city of Flowery Branch receives both the city's portion and the county's portion of the new assessed value for that property for the next roughly 15 years. That property is set there since 1988. The group has owned this property. They have attempted to sell it to Highway Business for two decades, two full decades, and it has not gone. And now these folks are being offered money for a particular use, and they're asking the local government to grant them that use. This is, this is not something that anybody, I'm just gonna speak in terms of myself. If, this is, this is, I appreciate you, but I wasn't gonna wave.
It's not bio-water. It's funny. You're coming up with points like you all are.
Take the vote.
Take the vote.
Yeah, do it.
Take the vote.
Okay. I, I, let me say this. If that piece of property, okay, that piece of property belonged to you, sir, I'm asking, and you know what? This is a rhetorical question. If that piece of property belonged to you, how would you like it if a city council stood up here arbitrarily made a decision to not allow your piece of property to sell because they thought a grocery store would be a better use of that piece of property? When you would be sitting on millions and millions of dollars, generational type of money. You know, this happens to be one of the strongest Republican holds in the state of Georgia, and one of the main tenets of the Republican Party is individual property rights. These people have this property. They have tried to sell it to Highway Business for 20-plus years. It hasn't gone. They're now asking for M1, which will help the tax base of this city to pay for the services that the citizens want. Because if all you have is residential, 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 you are going to have a very sick tax base, and it's gonna be very difficult to be able to provide the services that the people need.
Take one vote.
Okay. Whoa, 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 whoa. Just stop.
Come on, there it is.
Just stop.
That's what we said.
If we get yelled at, we both stop.
He started it.
I said it before, a couple meetings ago. He has the right to speak. Everybody wants to know where everybody's mind is. He's explaining it to you, but yet you're trying to talk over him and yell at him. So, I took the vote. Not to mention scolding.
If we're handing if we do and they don't, like if we give a vote and don't, no, we're gonna say this.
We can sit, we can talk. Yeah, but we're taking the heat.
Like if you don't like it. But we, y'all wanna know where we stand, we said where we stand, then you say, "Just vote, just stop talking, just vote." Like we can win.
Stop.
Right now, he's thundering bells. I have to go and like to hear your reasons.
So, I'm trying to let Mr. Englund express because everybody's asked why you think this, why you vote this, why, why, why? Mr. Englund's trying to express that. So, you don't, I know a lot of you don't agree with it, I get it, but he's expressing why he's come to this conclusion. And I will say that this project and this thing has probably taken up more time than any other individual project that I've dealt with in the 12 years that I've done this. And the fact that the council members are trying to explain to you why they've come to this conclusion, yet you don't wanna hear it. So, please show them the respect and let them explain to you, which is what everybody's asked, and let them explain to you why they have come to the conclusion that they've come to. Mr. Englund? Yeah, I'm not gonna convince anybody. Attorney body's mind in a different direction with this. You know, there's just, there's just a lot of variables you have to look at with this kind of thing. You just can't look at a piece of property and say, "Nope, no, deny that one because that's not a good use for that." You gotta look at a multitude of variables. And yes, there are, there is a, two subdivisions that are somewhat across the street from this, separated by four properties. There's another Highway Business property. There is the property that belongs to the city where the water tower is, and there's two more five-acre parcels in between this Highway Business and, excuse me, between this proposed M1 and the subdivision there, the villages. So, you know, it's not like it is, it's right across the street. There is a wooded lots that do separate those subdivisions from this particular development. So, you know, I, again, very difficult decision, something that's been weighed out, not something that just all of a sudden you heard about it and was like, "Okay, good enough." No, it's been something that's been bounced back and forth, and we've vacillated on it, and now it's time to make a decision, and I have voted to approve it. And that's where I stand on it.
All right.
Well, at least make a prediction to keep the trucks off the...
Sir, sir.
Spot springs.
Sir.
I mean, was this far along yet? After we're still hearing a lot of questions, so for the sake of getting this answered, can you come up and let me ask you just a few that I'm hearing for the purposes of having at least answered the discussion that is helpful?
Thank you.
So, they've been talking about, it said like 900 trucks, and now it's 100, now like 10, so can you help me understand how that changed and what the off-peak truck traffic will look like?
Okay. Okay. I think there's been a little bit of confusion on the numbers. This is my best guess, I can't speak for them, but my best guess is the 900, that was the initial total traffic count, cars and trucks, was initially presented a couple months ago. So, I think that's where the 900 came from. The 600 was a very high end of the truck traffic range we presented. We presented a number for 600. These are national handbook standards based on the type of use. We had not hired a specific traffic engineer, because that's all they do is traffic engineers and studies to pull the latest data from Spouse Springs Road and Thurman Tanner Parkway, pulling the latest exit 14 data to give us track counts based on our specific square footage. That's the report that was sent. That report actually came back with a lower total daily traffic trip count, and we got that in the report. That number is 636 total trips. Of that, you've got a separation between peak hour and non-peak hour, and as well as the distribution of what goes south and what goes north. So, in terms of numbers, that's 636, the total daily trucks is 212. A truck comes in, that's one, it leaves, that's two. So, that's both in and out, 424 cars. And that's also where the estimate based on those numbers of the other uses being 12 times higher than that. So, I think that's where some of the confusion has been. I can guarantee any of this. I've never said that. I've never said Heinz says this. I'm reading what the report suggests, I would never guarantee that. It could be lower, it could be higher, but these are national standards. This is when the handbook cited in the report that they're... So, hopefully that helps clear up some of the, I think, misunderstandings.
And just a follow-up question to that. CPL Rich, y'all looked at this and confirmed me?
We did not see the traffic study. We are suggesting that the applicant have regarded median openings on Thurman Tanner and the access points through the usual development.
Okay, so the next thing I'm hearing is how we make sure that the trucks are routed through HFR. I don't know if that's one you can answer, but is anyone in this room able to answer that? Is that, the way you have the right to do, I mean, how does that work?
The city can certainly establish a truck route. We've done that on other streets within the city. You would just have to give some consideration to the impact it would have on the use of the property. You can't necessarily over-regulate the direction of truck traffic until it impacts the reasonable use of the property. But yes, in concept, you can have truck routes within the city.
And that would be a condition here, or that would be something that happens as development goes forward with planning?
It would not be a condition because it would be you, the government, that was doing it. So, you're not asking the applicant to do it. So, it would not be a condition that there would be a truck route. It would be a decision that you would make at a later date as the city.
Okay. Impact study. I'm hearing a lot of applicants about that, so will you address that?
I'm not exactly sure what the plus specific to the impact study. We typically translate that to traffic study, which is what we conducted and delivered and provided. And that was what I considered at the very beginning when we talked about the site development. Three points of ingress and egress to create truck queuing lanes, between medium cuts at the appropriate locations, contemplating not just our project, but the entire surrounding parcels of the project across the street. The owner was willing to cooperate with us and develop this, not just inside of it, what's best for our project, but what's best for the entire Thurman Tanner Parkway that joins this 37.8 parcel. So, that's how we look at impact. I don't have the purview into the broader Flowery Branch region. I can tell you what the exact impact of our project is, and that was the goal, the traffic study, the site plan, the landscaping plan, the visual impact. We've done, we've really tried to cover all the basics that we can, and that was our task to do that, to assess the impact, which is not just important for the residents and for staff, it's important for us. We have a huge financial interest in making sure that this project works well. Traffic is not good for us either, so we are invested in this. This is my project, our company's project, we're not going anywhere, I'm a consultant. I live not too far away, and we're here a lot, so we're invested. This is important to us, and so we have looked at that as best we can, it's early in the process, with the best of our ability and our consultants and engineers. That's, that's gonna be mentioned in the tour.
Will we speak since this is all we got to speak?
No, sir. Anybody else have...
Why?
Anything?
Um, I would just wanna, I don't have a question for you, but I'm thinking. Um, I would just want to, I don't have a question for you, but thank you. It, this is a tough one, to echo what Joe said again, like, people wanted to do a traffic study, they did a traffic study. I know, like, I specifically requested that, and that was a big deal to me. The frustration, I guess, that I had at this point is, like, it was asked for a traffic study, they got a traffic study, and now the conversation for some of y'all is, "We don't believe the traffic study. How do you know this?" Well, like, there are experts doing the traffic study, like, I don't know what more, we can ask for in terms of that. So that, that's a little bit frustrating, because I'm like, I don't understand how to make those happen with that. I will say, when I got on council four years ago, one of the conversations was, "So you sat in things like that, and you're in a much different place, in terms of growth, things have just exploded." Since, since I've been, since I came on council, was, "We've got to get more rooftops, we've got to get more rooftops." Definitely feel like we've got more rooftops. The other piece of the puzzle in terms of creating a vibrant, you know, productive city is diversity of tax digest. And so we wanted retail, and we wanted, you know, a, a diversity of businesses. They weren't going to come until we built the rooftops. We have built the rooftops, now they are coming. That seems to be what was supposed to happen. So it seems like a very natural progression from my understanding and what I've, everything that I've learned, four years that I've been on council, that this was the natural progression of how things would go. In agreement, and as many of you out there would deny signs out there, if we deny this project, if we were to deny this project, and as Mr. Wayne said, it's going to continue to be, a topic of conversation is going to come back, and someone's going to want to do X, Y, or Z. Apartments. There'd be tons of deny signs out there if the apartments came. It's, the person has property rights.
If that is true, why do we have zoning laws? Why do we have zoning?
They're a guide. They're a guide.
But, one more time, and I'm going to ask you to leave.
Law.
That's just the hell we're going to do.
They're all, yes, but the comp plan is a guide.
But the zoning laws are laws.
All right, and...
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Oh, yeah.
Anything else?
I don't understand.
And you're leaving? No. Mr. Plancher, you need to be leaving, because I said one more time, and you didn't. So, and you keep out there saying you want town hall meeting, because this is exactly how a town hall meeting would go, because you would get a ruling, would follow the rules. So, you need to leave, and you're refusing. So, there you go.
You need to leave. Please.
It's unfortunate. It's unfortunate.
Sorry. All right. Now...
It's unfortunate. Stay the course. Do you hear me?
All right, so, you were at the, we've had a motion and a second. Did you want to amend?
Okay. You did amend the motion to add that a development agreement with a $200,000 contribution to Florida. Mr. Amblin, yes? I've had a little bit of time to give some thought to maybe what the wording would be, and if I might share that, sort of my best effort here in the moment. But I would suggest that that condition read, in the event Atlanta One Limited Partnership closes the sale of the subject property, Atlanta One Limited Partnership shall enter into a development agreement with the city of Flower Branch, agreeing to contribute $200,000 toward transportation improvements, as recommended by the city engineer, to mitigate traffic impacts of the development and/or improve the operation and safety of Thurman Tanner Parkway and/or Phil Niekro Boulevard, period. So...
So, he is motioning that as the amendment to the motion. So I need a second on the amendment. I have a second on the amendment, and we need to vote on that.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Vote on only the amendment, so then you're back with the motion.
Only on the amendment, so the amendment as Mr. Bennett read will take the vote. So, all in favor of the amendment to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That would be no. Okay, okay.
On the amendment?
So you say yes for the amendment?
Yes.
Yes, okay, just delayed.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, all for yeses, yes. Okay. Um, so the motion has been amended to include the $200,000. All right, so we're back to the original motion. Any other council members want to add anything else?
So how close, how close are we to the 90 days?
Tomorrow.
I mean, we're coming up with wording tonight for this amendment, I find that concerning. I'm not saying I'm against it, but I do find coming up with that tonight very concerning.
Yeah.
No, no, no. No, these people have worked so hard to make this decision, you have no idea what it's like, don't clap, because that, we want good answers, we want a good decision, we want what's right for Flower Branch, and that may be these warehouses that may not work.
And as mentioned tonight, you know, the, um, the real estate, um, individual who is representing the folks that own this property, this is the first time that we've heard of them wanting to contribute $200,000 to help alleviate some of the concerns that they have heard from citizens about the traffic issues. So that is why that amendment was put in there, as that was something that they offered this evening.
All right, so at this point, we're going to call for a vote, and Sheila, I'm going to ask you to do a individual vote call, and we'll just go down the line. So, so we're...
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, who seconded the main motion?
Nobody.
Nobody.
Chris, is it my turn? But your councilman might be in charge.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, so we're just going to go down the line, and we'll get this heard, and...
Councilman, how do you vote?
In favor.
Councilman, aye.
In favor.
Councilman, aye.
I'm a no.
Councilman, no. No. Councilman, aye.
In favor.
All right, so if I have it, that passes for number one. And, and we have a grant request by Olson Trailer. Mr. Bennett, you need to read that one, and what is that ordinance number?
It is ordinance number 653, and it would be an ordinance granting variance from the requirements of Article 10. Make that motion. Or it's 653 for the sake of discussion.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. I'm pulling Chris. All right, and discuss.
Yeah, I'm certainly not willing to take out number five and six of the conditions, and I think it needs to be known that this property is owned where they could put a gas station there today without coming to us as long as they could, the pumps in the front. So what we're voting on is not necessarily putting a gas station there, because they can do that. We're voting to say, based on our code, you've got to put the pumps in the back, so the main structure of the building itself, they asked for a variance to move the pumps to the front, which they believe will make that property actually work for a gas station. But in no manner am I willing to pull condition five and six from the conditions.
All right, any other discussion? Here, none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have the second session, Mr. Bennett.
We do, Mr. Mayor, at least for litigation personnel.